Congratulations to the five of the United States of America into a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we'll do a roll call. Mr. Veles is unable to be here tonight, so I'll be conducting tonight's meeting. Will you do a roll call?
Yeah.
That's me.
That's me.
Butler.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Oakbridge.
Oh, here.
Smith.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Thrash.
Here.
Ncento.
Here.
All members are present. Great. Thank you, everyone, for being here. And welcome to the public and welcome to our administrative team here. So minutes, everybody get the minutes. We have a, is there a motion to accept the minutes? Approve the minutes? Mr. Thrash, second. Mr. Smith. And now roll call, please. Butler.
Epstein.
Jordan.
Yes.
Oakbridge.
All right, I'm staying.
Smith.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Thrash.
Yes.
Ncento.
Yes.
Five yeses, two extensions. Motion heard. Great, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. I see on the agenda no new business.
Mass resident.
Yes, please.
I would like to say if it's all right, if this is the correct time. On behalf of the Bible reading task force, we would like to thank the city for their support. I know on Tuesday morning, I came in seven o'clock and to find Donnie and what's his name? Darren.
Darren.
Fixing the tents that had both been totally collapsed. And, you know, we appreciate that. That was just an extra thing that they had on their food plate. So we do appreciate the city's participation.
Got it. Thank you, Councilwoman. Appreciate that. It's always good to get positive feedback.
Oh, yeah. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you.
I see no correspondence on the agenda, so we'll move into reports. Mayor, do you have a report for us?
Yes, and I'm back in good voice.
Beautiful.
The report for today, May 16th, is basically St. Clairsville's getting busier. The weather's getting better, and we're getting more things going on outside. This past Thursday was the first food truck Thursday. They had people there with barbecue pork, and they had entertainment. And every Thursday until Labor Day, food trucks will be in front of the courthouse. Please support, what's that?
Fridays.
Fridays, pardon me. That's, whoops. Okay. Please support our local businesses and stores. And for a list of upcoming vendors, please contact Wendy at the Chamber of Commerce. Past Saturday was the second Saturday event in St. Clairsville, bringing out a lot of shoppers. Kids enjoyed the bouncy rides. Again, the second Saturdays of each summer month will be celebrated in town with food and things for the kids. Please come out and support our town. I was honored to participate in the National Day of Prayer. I was there on, was it Wednesday for the, or it was Thursday, National Prayer Day. And it was a beautiful ceremony, and I thanked the organizers for this beautiful observance to pray for our country. Met with Jeff Wine and Jeremy about our ODOT project. I know we're waiting on some things to come back from ODOT to get started with the temporary water line. Met with Jim Veles and Jeremy regarding some legislation. There's pictures up here showing some of the things that are going on, one of them being the charcuterie class that they had on May 5th down at the amphitheater. That was awesome. Everybody enjoyed that, and we're looking forward to doing that again, I guess. Eric's had a lot of requests for that again. I also had the pleasure of attending both The Wizard of Oz and The Lion King, both done by the schools. They were wonderful productions. Congratulations to students and teachers who put on these wonderful productions. I was privileged to be part of the Arbor Day observance down at the rec center. I, along with Lola Lewis from the Department of Natural Resources, took part in the planting of 15 trees to celebrate the 150th anniversary of the celebration of Arbor Day. And in fact, I didn't really do any planting. I was there just pretending to plant, but Jeremy, Darren, and Donnie and the crew had already planted 15 trees. They put one in for every 10 years of Arbor Day to mark the 150th anniversary. So again, thanks to Donnie, Darren, and Jeremy for already having the trees planted and for providing a canopy, because that was a very rainy day. We also met with, Jeremy and I met with Elizabeth going over ongoing city issues on Friday. And that's pretty much it. We're just getting busy, getting a busy agenda.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
Questions for the Mayor? Jeremy, do you have a report as a service director?
Yes. Evening, Council. Council items, we have no legislation tonight. We actually lucked out. We were going to have some one piece, and the bylaws were changed, and they changed the group that would allow, that they wanted the people for. So we didn't have to do any of that. The gas aggregation program, we're still working on that. Been working with Elizabeth on that, trying to figure out what we want to do. There's now four groups that want to work with us instead of the three that were from before. So we're basically looking at the original legislation to see what we have to do from that. That was 2009, I think, somewhere in there. So I had 10 different meetings throughout the last couple of weeks. Completed projects, we had a pre-construction for the I-70 waterline project that's going to be kicking off soon. We're just waiting on a couple of things from the subcontractors. Two-thirds of the water tank inspections have been completed. They ran out of time on Thursday, came back Friday, and it was raining, so they're coming back. The advertisement for oil and gas leases is out now. We also had our notifications, and the smoke testing that we're going to do this summer went out in utility bills this month. As the Mayor mentioned, we had our Arbor Day celebration, and we did plant 15 trees, and the deer are already starting to eat them. So we've got them fenced off now, try and give them a little bit of a head start before the deer get too rambunctious. The cemetery lift station is back online. Got two new check valves for it and pumps. The West End sand beds are also up and functioning now. We also had leak locate detection training the other day, last week. That was two days. The company from Canada finally made it down. And Jen has also started our city's records retention policy procedures up, so we've got a good start on that. Upcoming projects, the construction of the I-70, some more sewer lift stations. Our new V-Box salt spreader is in. We're scheduling the truck to go up and get the installation done. That'll allow us to go into some of the alleys. Our current salt trucks have side chutes, and so it just kind of spreads the salt out to the sides. This V-Box is a center one, so it'll actually go through it for some of the alleys. Still looking at the inflow and infiltration control plan, the sanitary sewer smoking. We're working out details on that. Still working on the potential purchase of properties. We talked about that in the finance committee today. We're working with some ODOT appraisers to get the land values appraised. Let's see, what else we got? Still working on the police locker room, the K-9 wash areas, departments, the electric department. They fixed some sports lights out at the junior sports field, worked on some utility poles on High Street, transferred some phone company lines and poles in another area of the city, doing some pole replacement. We're also trimming trees and doing service work. Also had some transformer, excuse me, maintenance, also working on streetlights, doing maintenance at shop, and we set some bollards down at Central Park. Water and wastewater, we mentioned the I-70 project. We're still fixing hydrants, curb boxes, and valves. I think that's going to last forever. Keep doing that. We're still at eight for water line breaks. We've been pretty lucky lately, haven't had any issues. Also, as I mentioned, working on the lift stations. The West End Treatment Plant, all of that work has almost been wrapped up. Started the seasonal disinfection process and started the HABs treatment of the reservoirs. Street departments, we're patching potholes, trees, mowing, street sweeper, ditching, signs, put up a new gate at Central Park to keep people out of the park area, doing culvert work. We've also mulched the tree pits uptown on Main Street, and then we're doing flower basket prep. Those will be probably hung up after Memorial Day. Rec Center, the community garden's filling up, and the summer concert series has started on May 25th. Eric gave paperwork there that shows the concerts. Police Department, working on the body camera grant. It's also National Police Week. I want to give thanks to our officers in chief and the guys for everything they do. And then under that, too, I want to thank them for a little excitement today. As most of you know, there was an incident with a chase in town. Luckily, the guys did very well and didn't have any issues, and everyone was fine. Good to the city. I've still got one out sick, but it's not COVID, and I've got one potential COVID exposure. We're just monitoring the situation, and we'll go from there. But other than that, that's everything so far.
Thank you, sir. Questions? Mr. Thrash.
Any update on the equipment?
Which equipment? The mini excavator, the, yeah, there's still, maybe, maybe July we'll get the mini excavator, maybe next year we'll get the backyard machine, maybe in September we'll get the lawnmower, maybe, maybe, maybe. Yeah.
Any word on when we're going to send this stuff out to bid for the water?
The waterline project, we've gotten our comments back from the EPA. We're working with the engineer. They're also coordinating with the gas company and AT&amp;T to make sure that we're not going to run into any of their stuff while we're doing this. And then as we started to talk about, you know, that's one of the things we need to discuss is paving options and some of the stuff. But I'm anticipating, I'd say, within probably two months, we'll have it out, ready out to bid. If something changes, I'll let you guys know, but that's where we're at. We're working with the engineer on it, the back and forth.
Other questions? Councilwoman Jordan?
I'm going to ask again, can we please, or at least can I please have correspondence from EPA?
We haven't had any.
Oh, you said you got, just said you received something from the EPA.
Um.
And also the water line.
Yeah, you were just talking about the water line.
That's the preliminary review of the project, so.
Yes, I'd like any and all correspondence from EPA, please.
Okay.
Yes.
Did you not also, maybe I'm mistaken, the water tank inspections?
They're not done yet.
No, when they are done?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. But is something else? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
No, he did. He was.
Okay, you're good.
Thank you.
Councilman Smith?
Yeah, two questions. What water tank are we inspecting?
All three of them.
Okay.
We have to do it every five years per the EPA.
Okay. And number two, you mentioned a records retention. We have a records retention schedule. What, we're not going to destroy any historical?
No, it's just how long we keep them, and then what we do, we'll box them up and send them up to the Ohio Historical Society.
I know there was a finance committee meeting before. You could bring up paving then, or should I ask the question now about paving? Are you going to talk about it in that report?
Bring it up.
Bring it up now?
No, I'll bring it up.
Beautiful. Anything else for Mr. Greenwood? All right, thanks, Jeremy.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Is it Police Week or Police Chief?
Police appreciation.
Police.
So let me just start before I ask for the police chief report. I appreciate you, Chief Harbison.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. This past week, we had assisted with the St. Mary's 5K, first time in the last couple of years that we've been able to have it and kickoff of the second Saturday events. Both had a good turnout, no barbs reported. Officer Yates recently got his instructor certificate to teach the law enforcement approach to domestic violence, which is a pretty good achievement for him. I think he had to write four, eight essays during that process. It was a long process to get that, and we're going to put him to work right away, filling a large block of our mandatory continuing professional training for this year. We have more training scheduled next week on less lethal impact weapons. Early this morning, there was a crash on 7470 split, and we had a request for a drone operator to respond in the search and rescue process because of some of those vehicles and trailers were down over a steep embankment, inaccessible, and they were unsure about the contents on the trailer. They wanted to look for any cars that might have stuck underneath. Officer Wheel went out and flew the drone for them, and everybody was extremely happy with his job there and happy that we're able to provide that service. Lastly, I'd like to extend a thanks to Bama County Sheriff's Office, the Ohio State Patrol, Richland Township, and Cumberland Trail for their assistance today on Main Street with the unfortunate pursuit and crash incident. Thankfully, nobody but the suspect was hurt, and with their help, the incident was cleared up, and Main Street was back to normal in a timely manner. That's it.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Questions, comments, other notes of appreciation for the chief?
Just one comment. I appreciate all the training you're doing, and I'm always for whatever we have to, whatever it costs to give the police officers training and all for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anything else? Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it. Let's see. Planning and zoning, Mr. Murphy. Did I miss something? No, I did.
You missed a net.
Yeah, my bad. Finance, Ms. Williams.
Good evening, everyone. We did have a finance committee meeting tonight, and Michael will be recording on that. The anticipated revenue is pretty much on target for the year. The appropriations, the expenditures are actually under, they're about 11% under from what we projected that we would spend, but a lot of that is due to not being able to things that we were trying to order and buy. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Annette.
You're welcome.
And now, Mr. Murphy, planning and zoning.
Thanks, Beth. First permit-wise, I mean, that's really picking up, I think it was last week, I was from beginning of date, and they just helping the public on different projects they had. So if anybody has any questions or residents of your ward, contact you. Feel free to give my information. Now the fun one. I kind of was going to give you my preliminary report on the different wards, so sorry, I might extend the meeting a little bit. But if anybody has any questions during my presentation at any point, just go ahead and ask. You probably remember from the two meetings ago, Council instructed me to look at the existing wards and what the populations were. So the way our code is worded, shall be similar populations practicable. Easy thing to start out, take the population, 5,096 divided by four, and each ward should roughly have 1,274 people. I then obtained the census block group data from Belmar. What they did was map out each block group of the population. I took that and then transposed, I guess the best way to describe it, our ward boundaries over that, and what came out was Ward Three and Ward Four. Obviously, the goal would be to change things as little as possible. Their populations, that's Marx Ward and Terrace Ward. Marx was 1,239, and Terrace was 1,287, so really not too far off that 1,274 thing. The two that were, there was a lot of variability, were JCs and Dons. Ward One, Dons, was 793 people, and Ward Two, JCs, was 1,777 people. So you can see there's quite a bit of variability there. Where we kind of sit now is if Council follows that ordinance, and it says shall, the logical thing would be to set up committees. You probably should have pizza meetings with the public or have an opportunity for the public to commit. We're nonpartisan, so that's not really an issue with us. But with that said, boundaries would be changed, and someone who might be in one ward could be in another ward, and maybe they have concerns or problems with that. Another option always that Council could take is you might say, hey, I would rather just keep it on a geographic boundary and remove the requirement from that ordinance that says shall contain as nearly as possible practicable, practicable and equal number of inhabitants, and again, just make it geographic. So with that said, I mean, ask me any questions, and I'll do my best to answer them. Beth had asked a little bit about the history, and luckily found some ordinances from 19, or not ordinances, but records of proceedings from 1977 where this took place. And Council at that time formed a ward committee, and within one month's time period, they created the wards. In their records, they say that those wards, the ward committee, reported that to be about 1,200, 1,300 people per ward at that time. And that was 1977, July 5th. So that's a little bit of a history, Beth, on that. Those are kind of the two options, I guess, the Council has. Does any feedback or questions?
Any questions? So, thank you, right? Thank you for doing that. I mean, we'd asked you to do that, and I kind of forgot that we'd ask you to do that now. So that's really good information. I think, does the Council take any further action this time? Was it just going to kind of, can we get that kind of, is it in writing?
I could email Council what I have.
You know, no major thing, but just kind of putting those numbers on paper, I think would be helpful.
Right, I could do that. And, you know, two options, kind of, the follow that ordinance section of the code, or the other one would be, hey, you would rather just follow geographically, you know, keep the wards and the populations as they are now. You could make that adjustment, too.
Councilwoman Thomas had a question?
No question. Tom, thanks for the effort. So here's what we have to balance, think about. Short of annexation, future annexation of property, these numbers, unfortunately, are not going to change too much. I only say unfortunately in relation to having the city retain its city status over the next number of years when the census comes forward. So with that said, your numbers aren't going to change dramatically. Is it, you know, do we keep it as is? Is it working well? It seemingly has been, it's not really an issue, it's not additional work for anyone, et cetera, versus, you know, again, doing what the charter says now, in which they shall. So if we're going to keep that as is, then we have to do it. But as Tom indicated, if we think that the way it stands now, then it could always be addressed in the future. I mean, it doesn't have to be this year, it could be in five years, you can reevaluate it if we are fortunate to have some additional subdivisions, residential subdivisions go in, and things of that sort. So I think my initial thoughts is, or would be to keep it as is for now. We are all educated on it. If something dramatic changes, then we revisit it. Again, I don't, at this point, see that there's a great need to change it that in essence would benefit the city in any better way than it's operating now. That's, that's my opinion.
So your thought, Mark, is to maybe remove the census about the population and just make it geographic, guess the boundary?
Yeah.
And that would be it? For any comments on that? Yes.
I think that would be the best, because people would actually know what ward they're in, instead of guessing and trying to chop things up, and people wouldn't understand what ward we're even moving in, where people were running, wouldn't even, wouldn't put stuff out, it'd make it more difficult for people to understand.
So you like keeping it as is?
Geographic.
Geographic. You don't want, you're okay that Don's only got a third of the work that you do?
I mean, I can pick up this, it's okay.
Just serious.
Any other comments? So what needs to happen that if that's, the direction Council wants to go?
If you want to make it geographic instead of the way it is now, then you'll need to amend the ordinance to reflect that.
Okay, am I hearing this group asking, Elizabeth, you would do that then, right?
Correct.
Am I hearing everybody's good with that?
Okay.
So can we ask you to do that?
Yes.
Prepare it for next meeting, two meetings from now, next month, whatever.
Do you want three readings, or do you want it?
Yeah. Three readings are fine.
Okay.
Anything else, Tom?
That's it.
All right, well, again, thank you for doing that. I'd still like to see those numbers, just nothing else to make sure Don understands what he has to do.
Just give me a quick email. It's kind of hectic right now. It should be different. If you don't receive it, all right.
Thank you very much. All right. Any other questions? All right, committee reports, council committees, finance, Mr. Smith, Councilman Smith.
Yeah, Council, finance, Matt, before this meeting. We talked about the audit. It's in the early stage, very early stages right now. I guess they started reaching out to the city with some preliminary things, just what they need. So that'll be coming up. Just remind everybody that we have the $5 million, which JC had mentioned. The way that would work is we would get the work done, submit the bills, and then they would reimburse us. Correct, Jeremy?
Well, they'd pay the bills.
Yeah, we wouldn't have to front that money. But it's actually $5,250,000 for the streets, which JC had mentioned. Also, we discussed the investment committee. I'm going to get some clarification as to who would be on that committee. I was told something that I just want to check into, so we'll see about that. I wanted to mention, Jeremy mentioned the ODOT appraisal for one of the properties, and the reason for the ODOT appraisal versus a private appraiser is since we're going to try to get a grant for that, it has to be an ODOT appraiser to do that. So that's the reason behind that. And last, which we'll discuss here, I guess, is the paving. We had no money from last year to carry over paving. We appropriated $200,000 this year for paving. In the future, we should probably appropriate more when we go over that. But I guess it's a good time to talk about the financing of it and what we want to do. Anybody has any ideas if you want to pay part, do a little bit now, or hold off until...
Let me ask this, Jeremy, where are, are we, is the plant open yet?
Yes.
So for me, the first question is, is there any update on the contract for the 2021 paving?
Costs have gone up. I met with the contractor, went over a couple of things, because we had three streets that were on the list that are going to be totally obliterated when we do the water projects, so we took those out, added in a couple of different ones, came up with basically two options to kind of go through. One would be, you know, two streets that were originally on there for $236,000, and then there would be one, two, three, four other options for $180,000. The problem with most of these, the one for the 236 is it's a full-depth replacement base and all. That's what that street needs. That one would probably be about the only one that isn't going to be affected in the next couple of years with waterline projects. So, I mean, kind of looking toward Council, you know, what your guys' thoughts are, if you'd want to hold off on paving, or if you want to pave just that one. The other ones that we had listed in there were South Marietta, the section of Reservoir Road that we had in there, High Street Extension, and Plaza West. And then the one, that's the 180 group, and then the other one is Edinburgh and Killscythe for $236,000. Problem is, we only appropriated $200,000 last year with the legislation, so we would have to amend the legislation if we went with that one street. The other streets, as I mentioned, some of those are in areas where we're going to have water lines. There's no doubt about it. Reservoir Road, you're talking a vintage 1929 water line. Eventually, we're going to have to mess with it. Just kind of is what it is. South Marietta, that's the section from US 40 down to Woodrow. Woodrow, thank you. But we are literally coming right through it with this project that's sitting on the floor now. So there's no doubt that these need done. I have a couple of different maps of things, the streets that we... I have a couple of different maps of, of things, the streets that we had on packages, streets that we want to add into packages, streets that we know need done. And, but when you compare them to the streets that we're going to be tearing up for the water lines, I think it's foolish to pave. And, I mean, I live here, I know what the streets are like, they're horrible. But it's also a balance. You know, we're going to have to make a determination of, as to how far we go with what and how much money we try and roll over. The problem that we have now is the two hundred thirty-six wouldn't be that high, but there's already cost increases in there from the petroleum costs being high, so.
From a legal standpoint, where's the contractor with regard to us?
The contractor was stated that it'd be completed sixty days from notice of proceed. That was dated October fourth.
Yeah, no, I guess my issue is?
They want the work and are willing to, to do whatever we want.
But if we, but if we decide we don't want to do any work, we're still, are we not still locked in? We're not locked into that at all even though?
Are we? I mean, I sent it to you.
Right, and I didn't, I'm having a problem with my email, I did not receive it even the second time, so.
I mean, the contract stated sixty days they had to have it completed. So, the problem is, you know, there was, they said, can we extend it? We said, well, we don't have much choice. So, I mean, there's a back and forth with it. I have no problem with the one, you know, one or two of these streets, but, you know, it just seems kind of foolhardy to do some of these and tear them up in a year or less.
But what you guys talked about in finance as far as, I'm sorry Beth, I just jumped in, can I?
Please.
But, we know Edinburgh, Edinburgh is bad and it's going to keep getting worse if, but that is, as Jeremy pointed out, one street and one ward. It's going to be up to you guys, are you willing to see that done with two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars this year to at least say something was done? Because like Jeremy said, their water pipes and lines are pretty new, they probably aren't going to be replaced, or do you want to see that money roll over to be able to put it out for next year for every ward? So, that's going to be up to you guys.
And theoretically, it might not even be next year because that project might take a year and a half with the water lines. It's just, it's going to depend on the size of contractor we get, and we're not going to know that until the bid day.
Mr. Thomas?
Is Killscyth?
Yes.
It's still part of that Edinburgh?
Yes.
So it would in essence be two?
Yes.
It'd have to be? And for two thirty-six?
Yes.
Okay.
Complete replacement. The problem is that we're actually going to be doing the, on the east side of Killscyth, there's a couple sections we're going to be coming down through and trying to make some more loops with our system.
I have a question. Has everyone seen the map? Okay, is there any chance that we could do, you know, I don't know if you want to call it a PowerPoint or something, that we could have it in an open meeting as opposed to each of us going in behind closed doors and just do it in an open meeting, those, you know, discuss that map?
Yeah, but the problem is that that project is morphing, it might change based off of the gas line, the water line and everything else. It's a good guess right now, but we don't have finalized drawings yet. So that's why we were just preemptively trying to meet with anybody that was willing to come up and go through it.
Well, I guess I'm saying because, you know, we're talking about going Edinburgh and this road and this road and this road without all of us having seen this map. Do you understand?
Once it's finalized, yes, I have no problem with that, but it's, it's still morphing to the point that it's just, the same reason why the project isn't out yet, we're still adjusting and adapting. If we have finalized project, then, then that can become public. But at this point, it's just internal.
But do we? So like, you're asking for the, this project, how we're going to replace the pipes? Because what we don't want to do is pave the street and then rip it up?
Yep.
A few months later? Okay, but it seems to me like this is more than a few months. Seems to me like we, we haven't paved, and I, I'm not going to advocate paving, ripping up to pave again. But if truly we knew, okay, we're definitely not going to do this section, that's going to be the last section, then I would think that we would start wanting to pave some of the roads that are really bad and were supposed, wanted to be on the paving three years ago and weren't, that was next time. And we haven't paved in two years, so I, I get the point of wanting to see this map, but I think we kind of know where we're starting with the water project.
Yes and no, because there's also going to be some other stuff. If you look, I've got another map here that maps all our water line breaks. And if you look at some of the streets that aren't included in there, they are going to end up being replaced. It's just a matter of when. So, I have no problem doing it.
You can't predict a water break, right? You just can't. I mean, you pave Etha and at the bottom of that street, that water is, that pipe is broken, I don't know how many times. You, you can't predict them, right? But we can predict the way, okay, we're going to replace all the pipes and we're starting here, just like when we flush water things, we start here and we go here, here, here. So, I mean, without knowing this map?
The problem is the number of breaks.
And you can't, you can't predict that, right? But, so I, without having that map, like, you know, knowing that map, right? I still think, you know, paving is important to people and, you know, I just think, I don't, nobody, I think that we're also supposed to be good stewards with money, right? I appreciate that. So, nobody wants to pave, rip up and pave, but, you know, and I hate to delay this anymore. I mean, this has been delayed and delayed and just because, not saying you, I mean, it's the, the company just opened, right? So, they're open, they're calling us, they're asking us, okay, ready for your project. We don't get in that queue, then we don't have a project this year, you know? Is what I'd be concerned about.
Potentially.
So, you know, I, I have to trust that you know which streets. And if you think, you know, I heard you say it's foolish to do it, but then I heard you also say, well, Edinburgh will probably be in that last phase, and just the way government works, I don't think that last phase is for at least a couple of years.
Potentially.
So, I would, you know, and, and, you know, if, if, I would want to pave as much as we could with being conscientious of what we're ripping up, but, I don't know, I don't, because I feel like if we don't say anything now, like, how much longer are we going to wait? Mark?
Jeremy, refresh my memory, is, the way this plays out, is this going to be actually starting in twenty twenty-three?
Potentially might be able to start this fall.
But it, will it continue through the winter though?
Yes.
It will?
Ripping up roads? Putting in pipes?
Yep.
Repaving?
Not repaving.
Right.
We'll, we'll, we'll patch and then they'll come back in and repave afterwards. More than likely what would wind up happening is it'd end up being like wheeling. I mean, there's going to be streets that are just tore up for months at a time. I mean, there, there's, there's no way around it.
So you're looking though for some direction from council, right? As to how to proceed, like the paving companies calling saying?
Yes. I mean, I've got a number for those two streets and that one ward. It's more than what we had appropriated before, we'd have to change the legislation, but I mean, that's not the first time we've ever done it.
What were those two streets before they increased the cost?
Uh, I'd have to look and see, but it wasn't, it wasn't that, the whole package last year was two hundred. That was like twelve, twelve sections of different streets.
And now you're saying you're going to do?
Those two, yep, I told you petroleum costs. They, they added prices, cost in. Twelve, twelve or thirteen different areas that we had in that package for, for less than two hundred thousand. Now just two streets. Now, part of that is though because that is a total replacement of the street. We're going down to the base, down to the dirt.
It was not put in probably, and it's, I guess he been?
Before, we were only going to grind out the top and put a coating on it, which is at best a patch in some areas because if the base is bad, it, it's just going to fail. And that's been the bane of the existence of the city ever since. And we have streets that, that, there's no base under them at all and we just keep putting, we keep painting them black. We put so much of a little bit of asphalt on them that it looks good for three months and then nothing.
Does this patch work for a couple of years? If we know we're going to rip it up, do we just want to kind of patch that?
Well, that, that might be one of the only ones in the city that we really won't have to touch. So, we could do that project.
Wait, what do you mean not touch? You mean as far as water?
As far as water lines.
So there are some places that we're not even going to put water lines in, we're not going throughout the city?
Very few.
But there are some.
There are a couple.
And if we knew that we're definitely not putting a water line there, why would we not patch that?
Could, yes.
Or pay back?
My, my question is though, do we want to spend more on two streets than we have the entire package we had budgeted for last year in only one, one area of the city?
If it's a street that we know we're not going to rip, or probably not going to rip up, that's been on the list for years, then it makes sense to invest and do it right?
Yes.
It doesn't make sense to, I, I, I mean, to, to do twelve streets that we know are going to get ripped up because we know they're getting water things?
Yes.
If you're saying there are some places that aren't going to get water lines because they're fine?
There are newer water lines.
Then?
There shouldn't be very much work on that street. But that's what I'm looking to, to counsel them, okay, it's either we don't do anything or we do this one street in this one area of the city and, because we're going to get lit up no matter what we do. If we don't pave, we're going to get lit up for not paving. If we pave one street in one area of the city?
But if it's smart money to do it because we're not, well then I don't know, what are you? Okay, but?
That's what I'm saying, but I, I just want council to be aware of what's going on and if they want, if you guys want to do that, we can. I'm more of the favor, let's just roll it all and then make one because the price of petroleum is up. Once the price of petroleum goes down, that project is going to go down.
But that gets back to my question, is the contractor going to hold us to twenty twenty-two paving?
No, he's already increased it.
Pardon me?
He's already increased the price.
No, if we decide we're not going to do any paving, period?
Okay.
Is he going to, I mean, is the company going to hold us to?
They're going to try. He's already said that, we've got a contract and I said?
That's my point, yeah.
For sixty days.
I understand.
I mean, it, it's, but I've also had to sit down with him and said, before we got five million dollars, this wasn't a problem. We were going to do whatever we had in there anyways. You, you look at what, how the project expanded from phase one into phase one and phase two, I mean, it encompasses so much more of the city that, you know, we weren't even anticipating, even starting for years. And now we're going to be starting like, hopefully this year.
So, there's other, but I do think this point needs a, a period to it, like, are we liable on the contract? So I know you have seen, so you can look at that?
Yeah, more than likely.
Because we need to know that. More than likely we are liable?
More than likely there will be pushback on it, yes, and will be.
But pushback, is that liability?
Yeah, I mean, if, will there be litigation? More than likely there will be.
Okay, well, I don't want to spend money on litigation, I heard that's streets, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the thing, I mean, we, we, the prior, prior board entered into that contract and that's why I asked initially, where's the contractor on all this? The, the, the route, the South Marietta thing, did you tell me that that's not part of the two hundred thousand, right?
It was a part of the original, it was part of the original two hundred thousand that was appropriated. The ones, the two streets that are, the two thirty-six that are more, to do Marietta is another forty-two thousand.
Right, now, so that, but that's part of the contract we have. Who's, who's the contractor? Shelley and Sands?
No, Caston Baker.
Who?
Caston Baker.
Oh, Caston Baker, okay. So, it's the two hundred thousand for, just that was appropriated by this council last year? And then South Marietta coming from that?
No, that was still in that package of the two hundred thousand.
Okay.
So that, that was included in there. Now, the only difference is I can use different funding for that.
That's, that's what I had.
That, that's for estate funding, that's a different funding source.
I understand.
But it was part of that whole two hundred thousand that was in there. We only appropriated two hundred thousand.
But you, and then you also said that there will be a line going down?
Yes, yes. Right across, right across the alley and then right down from St. Patrick's?
Right across St. Patrick's Alley?
Yep.
Okay.
Down St. Patrick's and then down to Woodrow to tie in.
Okay.
That's where actually the problem was, is that water line break that caused that?
Right.
That upheaval there, so.
Oh, okay. You mean on South Sugar? Okay.
Yeah, comes down St. Davids, goes across St. Davids, all the way across it, and then down to Woodrow and connects there and then goes south.
Okay. In, in the end, can there, depending upon what we do, again, I'll, I'll raise the issue, if, if we're going to be doing something, can the contractor, again, like I said, grind down South Marietta?
The problem, I asked him about that, if we just grind it down, it's going to turn to dust.
Okay.
The street will turn to dust.
That's, that's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, I mean, but I, I, that's another one, until we get that water line across there, we're trying to keep some of those areas where we've got it into sidewalks and things, so it's out of the street and we can adjust these and do with these, but if you look at this map that I've got here, every dot on here is a water line break. This map's six, seven years old. I mean, show me a street on here that doesn't have one, there's like two right here and some more on the north side. Every other street has at least two or three water line breaks on it.
The bad part of South Marietta from the alley to Woodrow, is there a line going through there?
No, we're trying to keep that in the sidewalk, but there's other things in there, we've got gas lines and everything else, we might have to be in the street. I'm not saying this is easy, I'm just looking for some, some direction for you guys.
Councilman Butler, yes.
So, but I think we also need to keep in mind, when we keep talking about how we appropriated two hundred last year for the paving project and we had so many streets, say, what did we say, twelve?
Thirteen, twelve or thirteen.
Twelve. And now we're saying, well, it's going to, it's going to cost this much more, but really it is the cost inflation combined with the fact that for the one street down here, we didn't even estimate it correctly, right?
Well, we weren't going to redo the base.
We weren't going to redo as far down.
We were going to do a topping like we always do.
Yeah, so that added cost.
Oh, yes, that added cost, yes.
So, instead of, I mean, instead of going back and forth, looking at the difference between what we appropriated last year and how many streets and all of that, I think we have to kind of look back at the original, you know, plans, especially if one, we didn't plan on doing so much on one street, we probably ought to look at what it would have cost anyway, we wouldn't have appropriated enough anyway.
No, no, we had it, we had enough in there.
Not to do that.
Not to do what we needed to do.
Not to do it completely, yes.
Right, include, for those twelve streets, even if we'd gotten into it, we didn't appropriate enough anyway, two hundred wasn't enough to even, if we were going to do that street properly anyhow.
Not properly, but it would have?
Okay, completely.
Yes.
Right.
It would have, putting the new topping on it would have been good and would have, but it would have been the Band-Aid on a chainsaw cut.
But?
But that's what we meant to want, to pass the money, yes. And that's what I'm trying to change, is to make sure that let's do things correctly.
Right.
If we need to fix the base in the street, let's fix the base in the street, we're not going to be able to pave as much.
Right, so that's?
Because we only have a certain amount of money.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, just because we're talking about the figure for, for that one street is well above what we expected, but we're talking about approaching it differently and more thoroughly than we were in the first place.
Yes, totally.
So, to, to look back and constantly compare.
We should never, we should never have to adjust that street.
Right. So I just think?
I mean, there'll, there'll be some things we'll need to do, we'll need to crack fill it eventually, going to have to code it, but with the new base in there, we shouldn't have any problems with that street ever again.
Right, so, I just think the, the back and forth, the constant comparing from last year and what we appropriated and all that.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's, it's an amount, the inflation rate has gone up.
Correct.
The cost of labor's gone up, the petroleum costs have gone up.
But the plan approach is different as well.
And the plan is different too. And the plan is different too. So, I mean, we have no problem, we can change the legislation and add it in there to address this.
Yeah.
But that was my point, bringing up, saying, does counsel want to do this and to pave with one street or two streets in one area instead of multiple areas?
Right, right.
Which, that's fine, I have no problem with that, especially since it's one of the few streets that we're probably not ever gonna have to touch with water lines. But I just kinda need some direction and thoughts from you guys, because you know how it is, it's, well, they always get that, and they get this, and this ward gets that, and I mean, it's constant, so...
So, yeah, let's see if there's any other comments. Mr. Vincentso, do you have any?
No, no.
Good? Mr. Smith? Ms. Jordan?
No.
Mr. Thrash?
Hey, if we're gonna pave, do it right. If we're gonna put Band-Aids on something, no.
So, I think that's the question. Mr. Thomas, do you have anything else to add to this? I think that's the question, you're looking for feedback, you're looking for direction from us. I don't know, is this a motion? Is this what this is? I mean...
Well, what we'd have to do is...
Do is amend our...
We would have to amend the last legislation from last year.
Right, to increase it.
And to increase the amount and go through it.
So, are we interested in, I mean, let's just kinda, are we interested in paving?
I am.
Yes.
Did you say, Jeremy, that the street Kilsit has to have some work done?
It will have some work done to it, yes. Now, it's just one little portion of it.
Why do you have to pave it? If you know you're gonna do some work there, just do the one street.
Does Kilsit have to be rebuilt also?
Not all of the streets, just one section of the west end of it.
Yeah.
But I mean, I guess I don't understand why we pave something that we know needs work. Where Edinburgh, right, is that the street we're talking about?
Yes, so what we've got here...
Probably is Never Get Edinburgh? Thinking of the town of Scotland?
Here's what we're doing, we're coming down...
You guys have a button down?
We have Jessup and Martha and connecting to get a loop down through. So, we're not really doing a lot down in there, so it's more of this...
Where's the Kilsit thing?
Down here, off this section.
Okay, where's Edinburgh?
This one.
Okay.
So, I mean, we are doing some, but it's not a lot. I mean, we're crossing it in one rural area. Most of this will be in the grass.
Okay, so, how do, so, he, Service Director's looking for some guidance. Are you saying, proceed, Linda? Would proceed with paving, are you thinking with paving?
Yes, but I'm not ready to, like, decide, you know, you're saying this street and this road and that road, I mean, I, for one, have not seen this map.
I had it here, and no one has come up. I had to call a meeting for the two streets.
But it's, I'm not the only one, and I still say...
I'm here to six every day.
That, what you have right there, stick it on that screen.
Yes, and once this is finalized, then yes, it will be up there.
Well, what are we coming in, well, never mind, yes, Beth, in answer to your question, yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Are we sure there's no other utilities or anything that will be coming in?
I hope not. Hundred percent sure, no.
But aren't they supposed to give us information on that?
Yes, we're working with AT&amp;T and everybody, and AEP's overhead, so we don't have. We've got a couple of undergrounds in there, but we're working with AT&amp;T and the gas company on that. The only thing that worries me about that street, and hopefully with putting the base in there and doing it right, is the drainage. And that's why, there's some springs out there, that's why that street went to crap so as fast as it did.
Is there a lot of catch basins that need work?
There's catch basins out there, I don't think they need work. There's some piping beyond the street that's gonna need some attention, but the catch basins themselves and the piping there should be okay.
And the cul-de-sac there has...
Cul-de-sac is, just like every other cul-de-sac we have, they're being torn to shreds in the back by heavy truck traffic, which is something else Mr. Thrash wants to bring up sometime, but we'll hit that some other day.
I mean, because I will be in favor of it if it's gonna be possibly another year and a half, because I don't think those streets can last another year and a half the way they look now. So, I mean, I would be in favor of it if it's gonna be that long.
The other option that we have with some of these, and I've talked with them, is, and I know it's not popular either, is we can tar and chip the streets, can tar and trip some of them, and it'll hold them in place. The state's done it with state routes already down in Noble County and a couple other areas. It'll hold them in place until we can come through and actually do the paving, but it's not, it's not pretty, and it's messy.
Even if, I don't know, even if they would, you know, repair the base, put their base coat of asphalt on, and save the top coat for later?
I mean...
I don't know how much that would save until the future, but...
It's six of one, half a dozen the other. I mean, if you're gonna, if we're gonna do it, let's do it right and be done with it, and then we don't have to revisit it again in a couple of years. But...
Okay. So, you're saying, yeah?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Jacey? Mark?
What are we, are we talking about agreeing to rebuild Edinburgh and Kilsit? When you say paving, that's what we're talking about?
We're talking about coming in...
It's rebuilding the streets.
We're gonna rebuild the entire street and then pave.
But we're talking about just limiting it to those, is that what you're...
Well, I'm talking about, he's looking for direction, do we, are we saying we don't wanna pave anything? Because to me, now, there's another question, but are we wanting to move forward with paving as opposed to, he's looking for direction from counsel, like, don't do anything because we're replacing pipes.
Do we start what we can do right now that won't be interrupted?
Well, I understand. So, I asked about Edinburgh and Kilsit, and we're saying yes, but I gotta, I'm thinking that people are also thinking we're gonna do some other streets.
So, yeah, so let's stay, let's stay on our current course that we were on. People are wanting something done.
Right.
That's it. That's the only thing we've talked about so far. Nobody's agreeing to a certain street, because now, I'm gonna weigh in, right? Like, I'm hearing you say that we are not gonna do anything, probably not, and I get, I know hundred percent. I'm in favor of moving paving forward, but I'm in favor of only doing it smart. Now, nobody knows the map better than him, so then I'm looking for guidance as to what to pave.
Those would be two, those areas that, there would be two that I would be the most comfortable with actually doing. But as I noted, it's only one street or two streets in one area of the city. If council's okay with that, I have no problem taking care of that street. We shouldn't have to do any water lines there. We shouldn't have to, if we rebuild the base, we shouldn't have any issues with drainage. I can't guarantee that, that's what disintegrated that street. But the blowback of, we're only doing one street, and, I mean, look how many streets we have. But here's my thing, with this map, this is all the water. I mean, this is everything that we're gonna touch in the city with this water project. And even the streets down here in the third ward that we don't, you look at this other map that's here with all these water line breaks, all these dots are water line breaks. Hutchinson has got so many on there, it looks like it's a blue line solid. It's gonna have to happen. We are going to have to fix these water lines.
I think everybody gets that. I think that what we're trying to say is, we don't want to pave, rip up, and put in a water line. Everybody's on board.
And that's what I'm, what I'm getting at.
Right, there's no, no, everybody gets that. But if you're saying, and we're also understanding that that's not happening tomorrow, so if you have relative assurance that these two streets are probably not gonna need a water line, right? Then why would we not spend the contract that we're gonna get sued over if we don't spend the money anyway? Why not spend it on, now we're talking, Mark, and specifically of those two streets? Why not spend that? So, we're spending on paving and not, no, not the personal attorneys, right? And actually start paving when we know it's smart money? Because if we did replace those water lines, if they need it, it's not until a later phase, and that's not happening anytime soon. And if that road in St. Clairsville, not Scotland, is that bad, you know, we, you know? And I don't think any of us in our geographic wards are at, have a problem saying, we gotta replace water lines. You want us to pave your street, rip it up, and pave it again, because now that's triple the cost. People will get that. So, so now...
So, the engineer's estimate for Edinburgh and Kilsit is $236,000?
And that's to do it right?
That's the contractor's estimate.
That's to do it correct, correct?
Oh, that's the contractors?
Contractors.
And the legislation is for 200?
200.
200.
Okay, so we would have to amend?
To add the 36.
We would have to amend that, but I would have to make sure that we have the money to do that.
That, now's where I was going.
So, nobody's really asked that question.
Well, we're 11% ahead of the game, I'm thinking, right?
Okay.
But we should ask the question, so is there money in 36,000?
So, in general fund, we have, we do transfers out, so there's extra money in there that wasn't transferred out. It's like unassigned money. Let me see what it is. So, in transfers out, there's, there's $200,000 unaccounted for that is just sitting there that we could use.
You mean unaccounted?
Unaccounted, yes.
That's not a good...
Yeah.
Yes.
It's accounted for, just not unaccounted.
It's not assigned, it's unassigned money.
Okay.
So, there is that money there, and then, well, some other possibilities I'm not sure about. The equipment that we set, we set money aside for motor vehicles.
We appropriated money for some equipment. We have a full distributive, just one...
Industry fund.
And everything, so we've been kinda sitting on some of the appropriations just because of unknowns and availability.
Annette, I noticed you said the motor vehicle, is that the licensing fee money?
No, that's just what we had set aside for expenditures and...
Yes, it is increased.
Has that licensing fee money been included in?
No.
It's included in the appropriations because it's counted as revenue, so it's already...
But we haven't appropriated it towards this project.
I thought it was supposed to be used for paving.
Yes, it's supposed to be used for paving. The plate tax, that is one fund. We have three basic funds that we can use for paving. One is the general fund, two is the license tax, and then, what was it, the gas tax?
Yes.
Is that the one?
Yes.
One is the grant by the county, you have to submit your project to the county, they have to review it. You can't do any alleys, it's only certain ones. The other one is the state one that can only be used on state routes, and then our general, which is anything that we can use. So, the section of South Marietta would've been the state funds because it was the state going through. When we did the, we replaced the culverts and the manholes out on Route 40, we used that fund last year for the concrete.
So, Annette, you would have no total amount for licensing fee?
No, it's included in the appropriations, it's based on, you know, the anticipated revenue, so...
Okay, so let's get back to this pay. So, do we want to, we have the money, right? How much are, how much is, for the $236,000, are you talking two streets or one?
Two streets, another $50,000 added to the 200,000.
We would be able to do that if we assigned that, the transfers out that's unassigned money of the 200,000.
So, we already had 200,000 earmarked, right? So, we need 36,000. So, we have the money. So, the question is, do we now want the law director to increase that appropriation?
We should just have to do a transfer out of an appropriation, an amendment to transfer that out to a certain place, because we already did the transfers at the beginning of the year to the departments, so...
Now, I'll say this, though, too, when we start tearing up these water lines and these streets, we're gonna find things that we're gonna have to fix, and we're gonna have to fix them ourselves. Catch basins, storm sewers, sanitary sewers, culverts, all kinds of stuff. We're trying to prep for it now and look and see what we're getting into, but we're gonna find all kinds of things, so we're gonna need money for that, too. And that's probably some of the stuff that'll end up being, we'll have to hire contractors to work with us to do that, too.
Well, and we should continue to pursue... No, we should continue to pursue grants, because we know that it's gonna happen when that stuff happens, but right now, paving, everybody's good, right, is that paving?
I do have one question. Are we gonna make these roads at least passable? You know, I could travel Broad Street sometimes, and it's like, are you kidding me?
We're gonna patch the other places?
We're gonna, okay, so what they're gonna do with most of these is they're gonna cut a trench. It's gonna be an 18 or 24-inch trench, depending on what's there. Some of these areas, if you look at this map, what I did is went through and found like alleys and smaller streets. By the time we trench that, we're right in the middle of the road, we're gonna repave that street.
Well, I mean, I mean, no, we're gonna pave these two streets here, but...
We're gonna continue to patch. I mean, we're gonna be patching it for eternity. I mean, there's no doubt about that. We've been out the last couple of weeks just patching. I mean, we're not ever gonna stop patching, because there's gonna be puddles that develop. It's just a matter of how far do we wanna go with it and make sure that, you know, we're not wasting money going through stuff.
Because even before you drive, there's a dip and a hump, and it's like...
Yep, no, I know.
Okay, and so I would just ask, generally, I'm not a fan of this, but for emergency language on this one, because we don't wanna do three footers over the end of summer, right?
And can I just say something about, I know this is frustrating, and this is taking a lot of time, and I know it's like, we're just going crazy, but commend yourselves. This has been 50 years coming, and this is a lot of detail, and it was a huge blessing to get $5 million, but it's like, how it changed everything, in a good way, but, and feel very good that we've got somebody who understands all this. We've had a lot of the council people come in, and I appreciate your patience and your willingness, because this is a lot to slog through. This is 50 years' worth of not being done, and it's all being asked right away. So, I appreciate your patience. I know we're all a bit frustrated, but how do we get going? But I commend you and Jeremy, and thank you to the state for the money we've gotten. I think there will be more money coming down. We can't count on it right now until we see it, but we are in a good place. So, I thank you all very much for what all we've done.
Thank you, and I appreciate the detail here and the direction and the, just the attitude of let's do it right.
Exactly, let's do it, let's do it right.
Okay, Finance Committee, I'm still on you, well...
That concludes my report.
All right. Did you say thank God? Utilities, Ms. Butler, please see if you can take us twice as long. Is there not a special meeting that we should...
Yes, there's a special meeting this Thursday at 5:00 PM.
Yes.
Anything else?
Special meeting, what's it discuss? What's the topic?
The budget, the, the...
Budget program.
Yes.
The budget program, there's also a couple of other things, other business, there's some utility credits that need to take place, and what else was there?
Talking about meters for...
Oh, yes, meters, various sizes, and then one of the things that we wanna bring up is the discussion about meetings for, or meters for every unit in the city, individual units. We have multiple buildings in town that don't have meters, and if one of the tenants doesn't pay their utility bill, we can't shut them off because they're all connected in the buildings. So, that's something we need to discuss. Obviously, with this water line project, we're gonna be tearing up a lot of stuff, so if we can fix a lot of things, then that'll be good, too.
The reason we're doing this special meeting is because we're on a time to actually start the budget when we wanna get it started, so that we can have everybody included and participate. We have to have it presented to council and have so much time to implement, that's why we're having this special meeting.
And that's all in the special meeting language, all those topics?
Yes.
Beautiful. We've got tons more time there, Ms. Butler, anything else?
I'm good, all right, no more.
All right, beautiful. Police Committee, we're gonna have a Police Committee meeting directly after this council meeting, so that's the only report there. Dawn, what could you possibly add to the streets north side?
Actually, one thing, I've had some residents of Greentry approach me on Wednesday mornings at 4:00 AM at the Legion. The garbage comes and picks up their trash hopper, which is filled with bottles and cans, and they lift it up over and dump it in the truck. It's bothering me. I'm just wondering if there's anything we can do, or if we can maybe ask to have that schedule changed instead of 4:00 AM?
We can try, but, yeah, there's a whole...
Have residents called the company? Because it'd have to be private company, right?
It's private Kimball, that's the ones who do that. They need to call Kimball.
They need to call, okay.
Have they? Have they called, do you know?
Uh, that, I do not, I do not believe so. So, the Legion is outside of our city jurisdiction. And they can call and ask the district commander of the Legion, or they can call Kimball. The city shouldn't be getting involved, I don't think it's a lot of our jurisdiction.
Yeah, good point, chief.
Don't they need a permit from the city to operate at certain hours, or how's that work?
Nothing.
They can just come in at any time of night?
So, yeah, I think it sounds like maybe they'll have to call the Legion and/or Kimball or, and or both, and I think maybe just sharing with them that the Legion is not in the city.
I shared that with them, there is not city limits.
Okay. All right, anything else? Now, how the heck that had to do with streets, though, way to slide it in.
It's on the street.
Streets, south side, Councilman Thrash.
Jeremy, could you get us a meeting with all the garbage people that pick up in town?
I don't even know the whole numbers of everyone, we're still racking our brains trying to figure that out, we could probably try and set something up with the bigger ones, I know where you're going, because you've, you've talked to me about it.
So, not everybody does, so maybe educate us what the.
The garbage trucks are tearing up our streets.
Okay.
We alluded to that on Kilsit's all, at the end, and the.
The cul-de-sacs.
Just eats it up, when that big truck turns, it weighs 50,000 pounds, it just digs in, when they try to, and get around that, I would like to see if they can, on the residential streets, use smaller trucks that doesn't weigh 50,000 pounds.
You can place restrictions on that, legally we can, I think.
No.
Axle size.
So, say it again, so everybody.
You can replace, you can do legislation, because we did it where I live before, where you can limit what size trucks are allowed on the streets and/or alleys.
I'm looking to talk to them, maybe.
Shorter answer is yes, we'll try, but if you could help and get other, other, we know, you know, the main players in town, but.
How many main players are there?
At least three.
Half a dozen.
Really?
Yeah, there's, there's a bunch of smaller ones.
You got Litten, you got.
Litten was bought out by Kimball.
By Kimball.
Oh, that's right.
So, there's Kimball and Republic.
Republic, Kimball's Republic.
Kimball, Republic, the High Valley Waste Systems and Shady Side, it's up here.
Yonk, or not Yonk.
We have a list.
You got Blue Ribbon Rovers?
We have a list.
So, let's see if we can do that, because I think you only truly care about the major ones, and they're the ones ripping up the roads.
They're the bigger names.
The little Ford, Ford pickup trucks are doing damage, so if we could get that list, could you see?
Yep.
Okay. Councilman Thrash, anything else?
Nope.
You sure?
For sure.
What about safety?
No report.
This Thursday, safety meeting's canceled, they had a conflict, they're going to double it up next month.
Okay. Buildings and grounds, Ms. Jordan?
No report.
Planning commission, Mr. Thomas?
No report.
Fire district, Ms. Jordan?
No report, the next meeting is May 25th at 9:00 AM, fire station.
Main fire station?
Yes.
Recreation, Mr. Thomas?
Meeting this coming Thursday at 4:30 at the rec center, as Jeremy indicated, a week from this Wednesday starts the concerts at the park, Central Park, so a week, nine days, so everybody's planning on attending that, other than that, I'll give a larger report in the next meeting.
Are there vendors at those?
Yeah, they have a couple food trucks.
There's a couple usually.
Okay, somebody had asked me and I didn't.